Okay, I'm going to call the meeting of the October 22 Select Board to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to do the community prayer?
I have it, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would like to be part of the citizens' participation? Mr. Ward, would you like to step up to the mic if you don't mind?
I'm just asking if I should participate at this point. Are you going to deal with the 61 years so ahead at this point in the resume?
We are.
So could I go then?
Well, yeah, I guess so, that's fine. Mr. Uranimo?
Yeah, I'll work with you.
Okay. Okay, the next, is there no one else, citizens' participation? Okay. Discussion and possible vote to support the naming of the Rochester Road Pine Street Bridge to be officially named Medal of Honor Bridge is my understanding, and Rick, you can fill in the blanks for me if you can, that we've been approached by, I'm not sure what the organization is, but there are a couple of veterans from Middleborough and one in Carver who, they want this bridge to be named after. Do you have any more details on that?
I don't.
Okay, all right, well, anyway, it was pretty urgent, according to Elaine, so I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion being second, any discussion? Mr. Belbin?
With this name, I'd like to know, it's on Carver property, correct? It's in Carver, this bridge, totally?
It is.
All right, and Middleborough already made a vote, it looks like, to support the naming of the bridge. It would have been nice if we had started that, but this is fine. But what memorials are going to be held with the naming of this bridge?
I don't know, Mr. Belbin, I don't know very many details about this at all. This came to us at the very last minute. And I do know there's one, does someone in the audience have details?
Yes.
Would you care to come up and identify yourself?
Hi, I'm Lisa, I'm the sh-.
Yes, and please speak into the microphone so people at home can hear you.
There we go, yeah.
Here's one for you.
We'll pass one over.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Lisa, I'm the Veterans Assistant.
I'm sorry, you're what?
The Veterans Assistant.
Veterans Assistant, okay.
I was contacted from the former VSO, Veterans Agent of Middleborough, and he's wanted, because the bridge is on Rochester Road, it's half Carver, half Middleborough. They wanted it to be the Medal of Honor recipient bridge. He wanted me to find out if anybody from Carver had actually received the medal, because it's the highest, there's only like 3,000 people that have gotten it. And I ended up finding one, his name is Maxim Lowell. He was born in Carver, this is during the Civil War, he received it. And Middleborough had two people, so Middleborough's VSO said that they just wanted our approval with naming the bridge. There's no ceremonies planned or anything yet, but I'm sure there will be. They just wanted a letter from us stating that it's okay to go ahead with this. And that's pretty much it, I think.
Okay, great, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Townsend?
Just a couple of things. So as I understand it, the bridge isn't being named after these three individuals, it's just simply Medal of Honor.
Correct.
Bridge. And just so you know, I did check with Susan Gifford's office just to make sure the bridge hadn't been named previously.
Good idea.
And there is no, it has never been named, so.
I'm sorry, I also have the certificate if you would like.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Any further discussion?
Right here.
Mr. Belbin?
I actually like the names of those war heroes on the bridge itself, not just veterans naming the bridge. I'd like to see a
It is.
A good plaque to be put on with all their names.
Yep, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
Could I suggest, Sarah, that at least for our Carver Medal of Honor recipient, maybe you could read what it says, I think it's pretty poignant.
Yes, please do.
I was asking if you could do that, but I'm happy to if you.
I don't have it in front of me. Okay.
All right, I would.
I'll let you read.
"The President of the United States in the Name of the Congress takes pleasure in presenting the Medal of Honor to Maxim Lowell," I'm sorry, Lowell M. Maxim. Rank and organization Corporal Company F, 7th Massachusetts Inventory, place and date at Fredericksburg, Virginia, May 3, 1863. He was born in Carver on, I'm sorry, the date of issue of the medal is August 24, 1896. And the citation, "Though severely wounded and in face of a deadly fire from the enemy at short range, he rushed briefly forward and was bravely forward and was among the first to enter the enemy's works on the crest of Mary's Heights and helped to plant his regimental colors there."
Thank you for that. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Next item is the Plymouth Street Waterline update from the interim town administrator on the progress of the project. I will briefly, if you'd like, Mr. LaFawn, I can read the timeline first, and then you can
Certainly.
sort of tell us about the progress and where we are on this issue. This is from the enforcement document from the Department of Environmental Protection, Consent Order. The town shall extend its public water supply line to the properties located at 162, 164, and 165 Plymouth Street in accordance with the following schedule. By August 30, 2020, file applications for all permits necessary to complete a water main extension on Plymouth Street characterized as Area A in the March 3, 2020, proposed proposal from Prime Engineering Incorporated to Mr. Kevin Ford, Towne &amp; Carver Health Agent. By December 30, 2020, secure such permits for the waterline project. By January 30, 2021, send an invitation for bids for the waterline project. By April 30, 2021, submit request for appropriation of funds for the waterline project to town meeting. By April 30, 2021, also, subject to appropriation of funds around such bid, award such bid or bids. By April 30, 2021, subject to appropriation of funds by town meeting, begin construction on the waterline project. By November 30, 2021, subject to appropriation of funds, complete the waterline project up to the service point of each dwelling in Area A. So where are we now, Mr. LaFawn?
Well, the first deadline, as you know, is August 30, and that was for the preparation of our permits. And as of right now, we've already filed application, the only application necessary is the Conservation Commission, and that hearing is being held, I'm sorry, that would have been last night, I do not know the disposition of that, I don't know if anybody else does. I assume it was successful. So the requirement for December 30 for securing permits, obviously, we are well within that, so we are ahead of schedule at the moment.
Good.
As you can see, going forward, once we get into the appropriation stage, the remainder of the requirements are all subject to appropriation, so obviously, it's incumbent upon us to go forth at the annual town meeting. As you can see, it's scheduled, you know, coincides with the annual town meeting date to secure those funds, which should probably be seeking a bond issue, at least initially, to accomplish that. The other thing I'll point out is that the town is not paying any fines with regard to this, any penalties have been suspended, presuming that we continue to go forward successfully with the order. I know that maybe some question was asked of me of that, so currently, there are no requirement for payment of any fines.
Okay. Do we know precisely what the waters have been tested for, or not?
Yes, in fact, I thought that I had attached a list of all of the chemicals, I do not see it in my packet, so I apologize, I will forward that to the board this morning when we're done with this meeting. There was a question about, refresh my memory on the chemical.
1,4 dioxane?
The next one.
1,4 dioxane?
Not that one, but there's a chemical that has not been, is not yet required by DEP that we are testing.
But it's going to be, yeah.
PFOS? That's correct.
That's the one.
Thank you, Mark, yes. So until such time that DEP requires it, we are, the town is not testing for that, but we know that it's probably imminent.
Okay, that's.
But I will send that list, I know, you know, it doesn't mean a whole lot to me without the, you know, technical expertise to know what all these chemicals are, but some of them may mean something to the members of the board.
Yes, PFAS stands for polyfluorale alcohol, and it's found in food packaging, commercial household products like polishes, waxes, cleaning products, water repellent fabrics. Okay, great, thank you.
Can I?
Yes, Mr. Belbin?
Do we have a amount of how much this is going to cost? Do we have anything as of yet?
No, it hasn't been designed yet.
Okay.
So.
And you said the funding source is going to be possibly bonding it out?
We're probably going to have to incur a bond, at least short, at least short term, whether it's five years, because it's not, it's not on a capital plan. As you know, this is something that is subsequent to the town's annual town meeting, and the town doesn't approve the capital plan, but as you know, it's illustrated at that time, it is not on the capital plan. So we will be forced to either divert some of those funds that are intended to be paying for capital projects next year and beyond, or to incur some, you know, indebtedness for that. The debt would presumably be paid from the capital project fund, but we certainly, we're not going to really have the luxury of scheduling this, you know, a year, two or three years out. We're going to need to do the project as soon as, as soon as we're required to.
And it's my hope that there be multiple funding options presented at town meeting in case one fails, then we have another one, because this needs to get done, no ifs, and buts about it, so.
Yes.
Need to ensure that if one fails, that we have a backup plan. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Moving along, the Silver Street proposed project update from the ITA, questions concerning the extension of the North Carver Water District's water line down to Silver Street. I had listed a number of those questions myself, lots of people have asked me. Would you like to speak to this, Mr. LaFawn, and then maybe we can have the applicant's environmental planner?
Sure, as you know, I did send you a brief memo outlining that the status, which currently is, I guess you'd say, suspended until a final plan is developed, which will likely not require a water extension, but the proponent is here, if you'd like to recognize her.
Thank you. Ms. Derns, would you care to join us? Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't expecting to speak on this project today, but since I'm here, I can relay that for this particular project, which is still in a conceptual form, probably the last time we spoke to the board, which I know was a different combination of folks at the time, things have changed since that early conversation. We have met as a group with the planning board, I think, two more times since that winter discussion, I think it might have been February before COVID sort of had other plans for us. So the project has really kind of transitioned into a significantly smaller potential townhouse development at Silver Street, so something of that scale at this point does not require a water main extension to serve the site. It would be, you know, better and more appropriate to serve it using wells, a collection of wells. So that's really the update. It's still in conceptual form, it has not been filed with any board yet for review, so we're still kind of tweaking the design and figuring things out from there.
And you mentioned earlier in the hallway that if it did change and go back to a larger product, project, that the proponent was considering a private-public?
Yeah.
Paying for it?
That was one of the points of discussion in our previous presentation. Again, we were just sort of kicking around ideas at the time, but I, that was probably the most viable option since that is an expensive endeavor, that it would be some sort of public-private partnership if a waterline extension of that magnitude was required.
And so if it were a public-private project, that would incur betterments?
I can't speak to that.
Okay. Okay, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Belbin?
Is this project going to be under a 40B project, or is this going to be a straight line through the planning board?
We're not sure yet.
Okay, and are you still looking for transfer development rights, or no?
We're not sure yet.
Okay, thank you.
It's really still in the concept form, so we're just trying to find the best plan for the community and for the developer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, the personnel code. I've actually, I actually, I know we voted on this on our, at our October 6 meeting. I went back and studied all the changes that had been made, and talked to several department heads in the interim, and it's my opinion that there's really nothing happening in this personnel code that's not in the public domain. All the clarifications have been up on the website since they were made. They were, if you have the code in front of you, 10.2 and 10.3, they corrected an example, and the correction actually makes the document conform more to public policy, to this policy. 10.5, page 11, was also a clarification. The word supervisor was changed to department head. 11.6, on page 13, was two clarifications. One was that they added the word "one time" for buying back sick leave, otherwise, an employee could have bought back sick leave multiple times, which itself would not have been consistent with the personnel code. They also, they made a clarification that this applies only to Plymouth County retirees, so if anyone here is here as a part-time person, but they retired from somewhere else, that that doesn't apply to them, this buyback. And point 15-2 is about personnel days. This was also a correction that makes the document more in conformance with the, with contracts. So in my opinion, I think that by forcing the Personnel Code Committee to come to us for every correction and every clarification like that is really too much micromanaging. That's just my opinion, and I am willing to entertain a motion to rescind our vote from the October 6 vote, and new motion that we need only to vote on substantive policy changes to this code. Can we have motion first, and second for discussion? No?
Well, I guess my question, what, I didn't think we took a vote, I thought we voted to move it to the.
I would, I think the direction of the board at that time was clear, whether or not there was a formal vote, which kind of leaves us in a little bit of a situation where, you know, the policy is clear, the policies of the board are clear, and for clarifying those policies, those aren't, my opinion is that this board's role is at a higher level than us clarifying administratively what your policies are. An example would be for retirees, to the extent that right now the buyback, sick leave buyback only applies to retirees of the Plymouth County system, it doesn't have to be that way. That's a policy directive of this board. Should that, should that change, we can't interpret that any other way. That would have to come back to the board for a specific policy update. And my prior history here, I would, when we developed this, God knows, 20 years ago, it never really occurred to us that, that we would come back to the board for those types of, whether they be clerical or simple clarifications of your policy. We're not, we're not making policy, but when we have people that come into our office on a regular basis and say, you know, what does this mean, and we have to figure, okay, how do we deal with this? Well, we look to the intent, the intent is clear, and so we have to interpret that based upon the board, within the board's policy. So, so there was some feeling among the group, the committee, which I'm not on, that their role is minimized after their effort, interpretation, and homework. So, so I do think it's a legitimate question as to whether or not this board wants to be involved in, you know, such administrative and clerical, you know, whether it's this or any other policy. I think there has to be this reasonable line between what, you know, the administration of the town should be allowed to do within a policy. The policy is going to be updated, clarified, or new provisions, well, that's clearly within the realm of the policy-setting board. So that's my thought on the process, and I think clarification from this board would be helpful going forward, because that's not the way it has been.
Right. And at our last meeting, I think, whether there was a vote or not, I think the consensus was that we wanted them to come to us for every little thing, and I guess my point now is that I feel that that's micromanaging and a bit disrespectful, frankly. Yes, Mr. Hoffman?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I guess my question was, we're going to take, we want to make a motion to reconsider the vote, I'm just, I don't think there was a vote taken to reconsider, that was my only technical question I got.
I don't, I don't recall exactly, Jim.
I guess I'm asking, what's the, what vote are we reconsidering?
Well, okay, then I would entertain a motion for us to take a vote to, to only vote on substantive policy changes to this code and let the committee do their corrections and punctuation.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second for the discussion, Mr. Belbin?
Okay, so this is where it comes into our town meeting voted on our bylaws, and our bylaws are what we follow. And it says, "The Board shall be responsible for promulgating policies and procedures regarding the establishment and maintenance of a personnel system based on merit principles, the classification and reclassification of positions, an annual compensation plan, and the development of personnel policies pursuant to Section 5.5 of this bylaw." Okay? Nowhere in this does it say a subcommittee of the town employees are going to turn around and make changes to the policy. It says, "We have that responsibility as Board of Selectmen." So if anything's going to be changed in the policy that we're supposed to approve and make sure that we're the ones that are directing it, okay, that we do that.
Mr. Belbin, that's why the motion was just made, that we need to vote only on substantive policy changes to this code, not on punctuation, not on a correction or correcting an example, not on a clarification that made it clear we're talking about Plymouth County retirees. I think it's disrespectful to
Are you a county retiree?
This board, this board, I'm not talking about retirees, I was using that example. This board is the one who established that subcommittee, so that just.
Well, we didn't, I'm sorry, we didn't. This committee was created by the town administrator.
No, it was created by this board, this board, a former board voted on this committee.
When was this committee voted?
I don't remember, several years ago.
Okay, because I also look back, and in 2017, it was changed, and there's no record in the Board of Selectmen notes or meeting minutes from that time that changes were made or voted on by the Board of Selectmen.
Actually, there are, Mr. Belbin, it's in the June 27, 2017, Carver Board of Selectmen Redevelopment Authority Meeting Minutes, it's on the website.
Redevelopment Authority Meeting Minutes?
It was a joint meeting, and this was a motion made by Clark to approve the Personnel Code Adjustment, seconded by Maroney, 4-0 unanimous. So those were made on the 27th of June, and I believe it got posted on the website on the 30th.
Okay, so these, those policy changes that were made that are in Redevelopment Authority Meeting Minutes?
No, they're in the Select Board Meeting Minutes, we had a joint meeting with them.
Okay, must have missed that one, but that's fine. But with these ones here, that were made this past year, did not come before this board, which, where they're supposed to. And I don't think that this motion to turn around and say, what is a small change, okay? It's very ambiguous to turn around and say, well, you guys can make little changes here and there in the policy and procedures, all right, and you don't have to come to the Board of Selectmen, all right? That, I think, is wrong. I think that we're told by our town meeting that we're supposed to do this.
Okay.
And abdicating those rights out to somebody else, I think, is wrong.
Well, I don't think we're abdicating any rights, Mr. Belbin, I think we're voting to, to vote on policy changes, and these were not policy changes, in my opinion.
They're changing of the language in the policy.
To clarify what was actually the intent of the document.
And under, under sick leave buyback, can you tell me, the only thing that's stricken out is the word "to" here. I don't see any of the other changes that were set under sick leave here. Where does it say "one time" or "from their position with the town"? Where does it say that on this policy?
I believe it's on page 13. I really, you know, you have some good points, Mr. Belbin, but I really don't think that we need to get into all of that. A motion has been made and seconded.
Right, but this is discussion time.
That's correct.
And we're discussing, you're asking us to abdicate.
Mine has it right here, under 11.6, page 13.
Okay.
So it's, the word "TO" has been stricken out, and a "one time" buyback of, "one time" and "of" has been put in, "from their position with the town" has been added, and a parenthetical or "by providing proof of receiving other retirement benefits such as social security, et cetera, which results in termination from your town position." So it already said Plymouth County Retirement.
I think the point is, is anything beyond that would be a substantive policy change that would definitely have to come before this board.
Absolutely, but what I'm reading is the change is not a substantive policy, it's not a change at all. It's a clarification, in my opinion.
Well, if you're changing something in this policy, then it's got to go through the Board of Selectmen. That's what it says in the bylaws.
It says in the bylaws. It says in the bylaws, "Policy."
That's right. This is a policy.
Yes. But this is not changing the policy. This is correcting or clarifying the policy. Mrs. Bogart?
I have something that I think could maybe make everybody happy. So, since this seems to be more of a clarification and not a policy change, I think some of the concern was when you look at the Personnel Code, if you go on the website now, it says, you know, "Adopted Select Board," and then the most recent update was from like August or something. And it hadn't come before us then, but it was just these kind of administrative changes. So, what if we decide from the future, when there's administrative changes happening, the town administrator is informed, it's emailed to all of us, and if we have a concern, we can raise it in a subsequent meeting. But that way, we're informed these changes are happening, instead of kind of stumbling upon them or seeing, "Hey, the code was updated, but I wasn't involved with it." So, policy we have to vote on, but any changes that are made, let's just let us be made aware of them.
Sounds fair.
Sounds fair. Would anyone like to amend the motion so that we only really vote on substantive policy changes, but we're made aware of administrative changes?
I'll amend that, my original motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you both. For the discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes four to one. Okay. Next item, "Discussion and possible vote on how many boards, boards, committees, commissions, et cetera, someone should be allowed to serve on, as well as if there should be any specific instances of..." This is a hard thing to phrase, Jen.
Yeah, I know. I know.
"If someone is on X board or commission, they cannot be on Y board or commission. In addition, clear up ambiguity from Town Bylaw 2.2.8 specifically as it relates to this broader discussion." I do have a copy of 2.2.8, if anyone would like a copy. It's basically talking about a select board member may not hold any other elective or compensated office under government of the Town of Carver during the term for which he/she is elected, nor any compensative appointive town office or employment for one year thereafter. Also, that any member of the Select Board serving in such a capacity at the time of adoption of this section shall not be required to resign from any other position held, and shall be allowed to complete his/her term of office on the board.
I'd like a copy of that.
Yep. Now, who would like to start this discussion?
I guess I will, because it was my thing. Basically, it says discussion and vote. I, we're not going to be ready for a vote today. I just wanted to bring this up to start the discussion about the kind of committee makeup, because there's, there's really no regulation. Someone could be on a gazillion committees. I, I think we should have some sort of standard. And I know there's been a lot of talk of it around town, too, so I want to bring it up. So, you know, I was thinking, I don't have a good term. I don't want to call them, you know, the power committees. But when you think of like the big committees in town, and please interject, because again, conversation, I was thinking like Select Board, Planning Board, Finance Committee, ZBA, CONCOM, you know, the School Committee, Capital Outlay, maybe redevelopment, I don't know. Maybe you can only be on one of those committees at a time. You can be on, you know, maybe two or three committees total, but it can only be one from that category. And I don't know what the magic number is, but I was, you know, two or three. And then in thinking of limits, like, should it be, you can only be on one elected board, or one board that can make policy, or one with a budget? I don't think it fits in any of those categories. Because if you do, you can only be on one board with a budget. Like, the Rec Committee has a budget. That really shouldn't be limited. You shouldn't be stuck, you know, just on the Rec Committee. But then you can't just do elected boards, because Select Board and Planning Board are both elected. So, I, I would like us all to think about what kind of restrictions or, yeah, specific committees that, that you should not be allowed to cross over on, and if we should have a limit, so someone's not on six committees. It's great to have participation, but I know there's other people that probably want to participate. And if they understand what committees do, if the peanut gallery's being loud, let me know. But if people know about the committees, they'll be more inclined to participate. Basically, I just wanted to start the discussion of, of should we limit the number and the types of committees people are on, and what should those limits be? And then the, the tipping point, or the starting point, were the two bylaws that she referenced. Because when, when Jim and I were elected to the board, there were two different opinions from KP Law as to if he and I could remain on the Planning Board and serve here, or if we could not. So, clearly that bylaw needs to be tightened. And then there was the other one that dealt with Finance Committee membership, too. So, that all needs to be tightened. So, looking at two specific things, but I'd really like us to think just overall. And please don't think there's any sort of vote tonight, because this is a big deal. I have more I could say, but that's the jumping point.
Anyone else? Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I think at a previous meeting of this board, we had a discussion with Town Council, who referenced the fact that, I think, if you were on the FINCOM, you could, you could only be on the FINCOM. And I did make the point at that time that I, I thought that if that was the case, that we should change our bylaw on the FINCOM to more closely parallel the Capital Outlay Bylaw, which specifically says, very clear in language, that if you're on Capital Outlay, you can't be on anything else. And the, the Finance Committee Bylaw was a little murky. So, I think at some point we should, we should bring that to town meeting and, and change that. I think if we were to change, you know, how many boards or committees someone should be on, I think that's a substantive change from the way we've operated in the past. Something like that should go to town meeting. Perhaps, you know, if that's the feeling of the board or ever, we should develop our thoughts and bring it to town meeting. And just on, on 2.2.8, when I read it, that last sentence, it's pretty, I, I think that references to when this 2.2.8 was first written. I think that's what that last sentence, you know, "Any member of the Select Board serving in such capacity at the time of the adoption of this section." So, that's the way I read it.
It is. It is. I remember very distinctly, because at the time, I was an employee, as well as being a Select Board person. And I leaned over to Town Council at the time and said, "So, I'm out of a job tomorrow?" He said, "Whoops." And, and that was, it put into the amended motion. Yeah. Because that was not the intent, wasn't the intent of putting people out of work.
Right. So, it's just that, that sentence is, is at that, that one specific point in time, not ongoing.
I believe that was the intent, Mark, but you know, that probably should be clarified, too.
Absolutely. Maybe at some point, we could reach out and have that redrawn a little bit to make it a little clearer. But anyway, those are my thoughts.
Those would tend to be, like you say, a transitional provision that would apply at the time. Correct. Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Just a couple of things. One, I agree with Mr. Townsend. And like Jen said, her and I were involved in this 2.2.8. And I think that's where the confusion came, where one of the lawyers at KP Law interpreted that, "At time of adoption of this section," meaning when the vote was taken, versus when this was actually, this bylaw was actually voted on. So, once they got together and then they realized that was a mistake, that's when, because we were told first, we could be on the, on both, and then we were told we couldn't.
Right.
So, I think you're right at that. That's a transitional type thing. What Jen is bringing up, it's, it's a good idea. I guess half me, in a perfect world, it's a good idea. But there's been so many times, we haven't had full boards and committees in the town. Until recently, we finally have. And unfortunately, as we all know, we're on a couple of different committees, and not everybody wants to volunteer. So, we have to be very careful with how we restrict it, because we, I'd, I'd rather see full boards with a cup, you know, a couple, with people on a few boards than not full boards. I mean, Finance Committee is a perfect example. It's finally full. The Rec Committee was never full. You know, they're full now and the other. So, it's a good, like Jen's a good starting point to talk, but we have to be careful, because, like I said, I'd rather have full boards than, you know, half-empty boards.
Mr. Belbin?
I agree with Jen. My feeling is, and I've always said this, is that one elected and one appointed. But the ones for appointed, I'm sorry, the big ones are Planning, ZBA, CONCOM, the Select Board, Finance Committee. All right? Those are the big ones here within our town that have control. And my feeling is having people, one resident serving on multiple boards, all right, if you do that, you now have a control factor of this person who's on CONCOM, all right, is now going to a zoning, and now you have a conflict between this person. And he's supposed to be dealing with the CONCOM issues here, but then you go to a ZBA meeting or a Planning Board meeting, and you find out that, "Well, I'm talking about conservation issues during a zoning board meeting." And you're really, you're not there for that. You're there for just the ZBA. So, you have to really look at this and say, "One person per board," all right, "not multiple ones." That's my opinion. Again, with the Select Board one, you guys are totally correct. I was there. It's to go ahead, and it was a leeway from people that are actively in committees to finish off their term, and that's it. Why we have two lawyers being asked the same question and getting two different opinions is a whole nother ballgame. Get into that another time. But dealing with this only here, we really have to make sure that every resident has the same opportunity to serve on a board. And when you have people on multiple boards, you kind of limit that. You'll limit who's being part of our town, because everyone has something different to put into the bucket. All right? And if you have the same people in the same bucket, it's all the same. So, diversity is best, and not having the same people in is the best. So, anything going forward with this is, really has to be discussed. And if you can only serve one, be a selectman, and that's it, a selectman, then maybe we have to do that with all the other boards and say, "Hey, pick a board. That's the one you want to be on? Fine. If you want to finish your term and you want to go to another board? Fine. Go right ahead." But I was reading on another one that you have to wait a year after you go ahead and you get off of one board, you got to wait a year before you get put onto another one. So, and I know that wasn't followed in the past. Or if, if you failed at the voting box for an elected position, and you're supposed to wait a year before you get appointed, and that wasn't followed in the past. So, like I said, we have to look at our bylaws and follow our bylaws. And if we need to change them, then we need to go back to town meeting and change them. So, this is a great first point of starting the discussion and continuing the discussion on.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. My feeling about this right now is that it's not just that the boards you mentioned, the Board of Selectmen, Conservation, Planning, Zoning are, are the, the big guns. It's that they're the permitting authorities. And I think that's the key. They're the permitting authorities. So, all, all, all town committees and boards and commissions have some, as far as I know, have some kind of budget, even if it's miniscule. And so, even if that's a stipend to its members or something like that. So, so the way the Finance Committee Bylaw reads, no one from the Finance Committee should be on any of those others, because they all have some sort of budget. So, it talks about the town officers. And the annual report refers to the town officers as, and it has a list of every single committee under the sun. So, they're all officers. We're all officers. So, to me, the big distinction is between permitting authorities. Bob's example was being on the Conservation Commission and on the zoning board. And, and I agree. Or Planning Board and zoning, or Select Board and some other permitting authority. It just, to me, it just doesn't work, and it does seem rife with conflict. But personally, I don't think there's a problem. And we need people. And sometimes we need a Select Board representative on the zoning bylaw update committee, or something like that. So, that, that's my feeling. Mr. Lefan, you look like you'd like to say something?
Yes. Just to the extent that we use the word "conflict," but we're not using it in the sense of the Conflict of Interest Law.
No. Right.
So, I wouldn't want anyone to be watching us to think that anybody has a, you know, a legal conflict of interest. I know, that's not what you're talking about.
No, no. I didn't mean it that way.
But I just, you know, but I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you very much for that. Yeah. No, that's, that's definitely not the intent of what I said.
One other thing.
Mr. Belbin, and then Mrs. Bogart?
Cool. Go.
Okay. So, you brought up the Finance Committee, and I think I just, to read it out to the public, it says, "Any registered voter of the Town of Town shall be eligible for appointment to the Finance Committee or Council on Aging, except that no elected or appointed town officer, or regular town employee, or person holding a position of financial responsibility for the town, shall be eligible for membership in such agency. No member of a special town committee shall be authorized to vote as a member of such agency on any matter pertaining to the duties of a special committee of which he or she is a member." So, right there, it basically says, "You can't serve on anything else, really." That's my, how I read it. Okay? Why the Council on Aging is in this for the FINCOM, I have no idea. That's a whole different ballgame there. But that's pretty much what our bylaw says. And if it's not being followed, then we have to go back and say, "You know what? If it's not being followed, then we need to follow it."
Mrs. Bogart?
We all want full committees, but I go back to an idea I've brought up before with, and it's going to take a lot to get people interested. But I had said before, on the town website, right on the front, let's make it easy for people to know what boards and committees exist. Click one thing, you get a list of everything, and two or three sentences of what it does. People know, "Oh, look at that. That's kind of neat. I didn't know that existed. Hmm. I wonder if I'd be interested in that." That's the, the jumping point. If people don't know what a committee does, or that it exists, they're not going to join it. So, if we're concerned that by limiting the number of committees someone can be on, we're going to be left with empty boards, then we're not doing our job to let people know these boards exist and to encourage participation. We don't want to beg, but we want to let people know, "Hey, you have this opportunity," even if they don't know it's there. So, so I think this is, this is not something for a vote tonight. This is not something that can get fixed today, but I think it's something that can be improved on.
And to that point, we are, that is in the course of being worked on, is Jen's suggestion, which I think is a very, very good one.
Yes, it is.
Because then, too, like if a board is full, and I'm asking this, when, when people's terms are up, like on the Rec Committee, I know when I was on, it was, you know, an annual appointment. But are those appointments automatic? Like, if you're still, if you're on the board and you want to continue, do you automatically get to continue? Because if a term is ending and someone wants to join a board, they might not know, "Oh, it's full. Well, I guess I'll have to wait for someone to resign." But would they have the chance to kind of put in to join a board if an opening was coming up?
Yeah, there's no automatic renewal.
Yeah.
So, then maybe we can make that kind of more obvious, too, in, in one place, to let people know this is coming up. I just, people aren't going to join something that they don't know exists, or don't know that it interests them. So, I don't think we should not limit, and I, I hate the word "limit," but not, yeah, not limit the number of boards someone can be on, because we're scared to have empty seats. We need to do better. So, and it seems like this will need bylaw changes in the specifics and maybe writing a new one. So, I would love this board to consider doing that between now and town meeting. And not just, "Okay, one time. Jen brought it up. Good job. Forget it." So, because changes need to happen, and I would just like to see this flesh out. And then before we get to town meeting, we can let people know, "Hey, we're, you know, we're going to limit the boards, but look at all these cool opportunities you have." So...
Well said.
Can I make a motion that we, that the Board of Selectmen create a subcommittee for looking at a possible change on the terms on the different boards and committees and commissions? Two members?
I'm, I'm not sure we can do that, because that's, making a subcommittee is not really on the agenda. But we can...
It says, "Discussion and possible vote."
On how many boards? It doesn't say on, create a subcommittee. It's minutia, Bob, but tell you what, why don't we continue this discussion to the next meeting, and then we'll put the subcommittee on the agenda?
Yeah.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Because then, too, to your point, like, obviously, there's going to be cases when a new committee's formed, and it needs members from other committees. There shouldn't be a limit on that. You know, the Master Plan Committee, the, the zoning one that I'm representing us on. So, you can't say only two, and you're done. There's going to be exceptions, but let's get it fleshed out in a nice, well-written, not ambiguous bylaw. And that would benefit everybody in town, including the people who have to enforce said bylaws.
Right. Thank you.
Yes.
Good point.
No, and I think, Jen, that's an excellent point, because, you know, we're in a situation now where, you know, you can't blame people for serving. Somebody got appointed to something. Their service is, is valuable. So, how we get to the point of enforcing the bylaw, again, it's about how, not if. And I think that's, we don't want to be divisive as we try to correct something that isn't necessarily someone's fault.
Right. Yep. It was well said, too. So, shall we table this for the next, next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you all.
And we don't have to talk about it like every time. I just don't want it to get like rotten, you know?
Okay.
Thank you, guys, for being open to this.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. The next item is Chapter 61A Land, AD Make Pete's on Winham Road. Discussion and possible vote on the town's right of first refusal on this property, and discussion of the process for choosing land to exercise the town's right of first refusal. If I may, I would like to start the discussion with the second portion of this. And what, what I just wanted to point out was, this was a piece of land that the board... And what I just wanted to point out was this was a piece of land that the board, we tabled our right of first refusal some time ago because at the time, the proponent was proposing solar panels going over a brook. They are not doing that now. But what I really want to talk about here is the process by which we decide we're going to look into purchasing a piece of property and I don't believe that was done last time. We have an open space and recreation plan, which is currently out of date and we need, Mr. LaFawn spoken to this in the past, we need to update that so that we can.
And we do have a proposal from Serpent to do that.
That's, and that's terrific. The reason I'm bringing it up is because that is a roadmap for us as to which parcels we might want to consider purchasing. It's not a decision we should make at a, at a meeting where, oh, we see, we see a property before, it's the first time we've looked at the map, oh, that looks like we should buy it. It just can't work that way because first of all, it takes a lot of money to buy these properties. And I've said in the past that if a property like, like the coal property came to us again, which is over 200 acres, we need to have that plan in place so we can get state grant money and it's a long exhaustive process and it requires large amounts of money. It's not something I don't think the CPA Committee could even handle. And this property is off Bunny's Road. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Bunny's Road. It's almost 600 acres of land and just in my humble opinion, I believe solar panels there is better than single-family homes. We just built a new elementary school. We don't need a second one. Mr. LaFawn?
Yeah, I think, I think it was Bob that raised this question at the last time it came in here and I think it's a valid one. My recollection is years ago, there was a Technical Review Committee that would make a recommendation to this board.
There still is, I think.
Right, but the permitting process, I don't think should begin until the board makes a decision and the board should rely on your land use professionals to advise you because for a proponent to go through, you know, it could be exhausting and expensive permitting to find out that the board isn't going to take what may be thought to be really a parliamentary vote, that's unfair to the applicant. This particular applicant was following the directions that they were given in good faith, but I think it does speak to, you know, the larger issue going forward as to what process you want to use, you know, when these do become, you know, when they come before the board, where should they have been first? What information should you be presented with? What permitting should or shouldn't be happening? And I think you already got my opinion and, you know, and what I just said. I think the Technical Review Committee should forward to this board a recommendation for you to consider. If you want more information, that's fine because I think we want to be fair to the applicants too.
Sure, that's right.
And then if the board then makes a decision not to exercise, you're right, well, then the applicant can go through the appropriate permitting processes. So that's my, my thought on the process. I don't think you should be the end of the line.
Right.
Because people are spending money and in good faith, they want to get direction from, from this board.
Right. I appreciate that. Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, I thoroughly agree. It's, in my opinion, is over the past number of years, the Board of Selectmen has been diminished the roles that we have rights to and I want to bring those back. And I think projects like this and also the proposed Marijuana Corporation that's planning in South Carver, I think before they go to any planning or zoning or conservation, they should come to us first, okay?
And that's the legal process for a host community agreement for the, for instance, on.
Correct. I mean, but talking about the 61A lands and the possibility of purchasing them, it takes us time to go ahead and evaluate that. Is it worth it for us for the town to purchase product? How valuable is it for us for the town to preserve that property? So we needed that time to do that. So I think, in my opinion, in the future, that any projects that come before the, any other board or committee, that the applicants be sent to us first. That way we can go ahead and evaluate what's best for what we may need to do it for the town.
Well, I think that's only for Chapter 61A right of first refusal that it comes to us. Is that, isn't that what you were suggesting?
Yes, right. Well, actually what, you know, as, you know, as Bob mentioned with the retail marijuana proposal for South Carver, once again, the proponents were given direction to go through a particular process, but legally that's, needs to come before the board first to request a host community agreement, negotiate a host community agreement, then it goes through the permitting process. Once again, you have potentially, you know, expensive effort by a proponent, you know, before, you know, what should be the low cost, you know, that the most low cost part of the process, you know, you don't want to get through, spend god knows how much money and find out that, you know, the town's not interested. I mean, forgetting the legal ramifications of that. So again, to, you know, to Bob's point, I think to the extent that there's, you know, you get the appropriate information from your land use professionals first and again, if you want more information, you want, that's fine, but at least you're starting at, I think in fairness to an applicant, you're starting at the right place.
Right. I just meant the distinction between 61A land and the marijuana project. Those are, those obviously should come to us first, but not every project that comes before the Planning Board or Conservation needs to come to us. That was my only distinction. Yes, Mr. Belvin?
Same like a solar agreement, a solar agreement coming to us first before it going to the other processes to say, okay, fine, this.
That's true, that's the other one.
So just to make sure that the process is standardized, that issues that have to deal with us come to us first so we can have discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ward, did you have some comment to make on this particular project?
Why don't we wait until whatever presentation they're going to do?
Okay. All right, thank you, sure. Someone from the proponent of this Chapter 61A land like to speak to us? Thank you, sir. If you could use this mic here, the other one isn't working for some reason. Yeah, thanks a lot.
It's okay to take this off, right?
Yes, but just speak into the mic so we can hear you.
Good morning, my name is Tom Melahan. I'm with Renewable Energy Development Partners. I'm here with my business partner Hank We Met. We are the project proponent and I was here about a month ago for this topic and I apologize, I didn't do too good a job in our application and there were errors in it, so we had to withdraw the application and fix it. And then I wasn't really prepared for giving a presentation to the board about the project and so we've come prepared to do that now. So we thought it would be helpful for you guys to have some context of where it is and what the project is so that you can deliberate with some more background.
Great, thank you.
And then there are some members of the public here too that want to speak to it. So if it's all right with the board, if Hank We Met and Sarah can have some time to describe the project, we appreciate it.
Yes, please, we appreciate that.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Hank We Met. I'm a principal with Renewable Energy Development Partners. We are the proponent for the proposed solar project. That's the subject of this request to convert land. Are you okay with me being?
Totally.
Okay. So like Tom just said, we wanted to take hopefully just a few minutes to give you an overview of the project, where the land is, what the nature of the project is so that you have information to factor into your deliberations here. Broadly, this project is a innovative dual-use solar slash agricultural project. It both helps meet the state's energy and climate goals with the solar component, but importantly, it also preserves the continued use of the agricultural land beneath the solar project. So there are two components to the project. One component is a solar canopy over the existing agricultural canals and the second component is a elevated ground-mounted array under which farming will take place. So essentially, the land use is remaining agricultural for this project and there's a solar project that will be constructed above that agricultural use. To orient you to the project, I don't know, is that the best place to have that?
Can everybody say this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. If you could take the microphone and sort of pull it closer to you.
Does it?
I think the cord's long enough.
Okay, great. Sorry. Sorry, Jen, I didn't want to take your.
No, it's fine.
Is that better, Madam Chair?
Much better, thank you.
Okay. So just to orient the board to the project, as you pointed out, Madam Chair, this is a roughly a 14-acre footprint of solar within a roughly 600-acre parcel. The, about eight of those acres are, take up the footprint of the canal. So it's the canal and the associated dike roads that abut the canal that, that will host the canopy portion of the project. And then there's about another six acres that hosts the elevated ground-mounted portion of the project where the farming will take place. That entire 14 acres is landlocked within the overall 600-acre parcel. There's no public access to it and it's a, as you can see, it's an irregularly shaped discontinuous area. And we picked that area for conversion to be consistent with the approach that we took on our first dual-use project that the town approved at Gate Street. And that methodology was, we're converting the land that is below the footprint of the solar. And that leads me to the point of, well, why are we here? Because I just told you that all of the land is remaining in agricultural use, but here we are proposing to convert the land from agricultural use. And that's a product of the fact that the 61A statute, while the state solar program mandates that the land beneath dual-use projects continues to be agriculturally used, so that's a mandate of the solar program, the 61A program doesn't recognize dual-use programs as agricultural. So it's an administrative box that we're in that requires us to convert the land that has the solar on it. So we're following the same methodology that we followed for the Gate Street project where we just went ahead and we removed the land that is under the solar and didn't remove it, we converted it to a commercial use. And that's what we've proposed to do here. Let me just check my notes because there's some key points I wanted to make sure I made. I think that is, that's what I wanted to convey as to what the project is and why we're here. I'd like to turn it over to Sarah at this point. She's our lead permitting consultant and she can walk you through the steps we took with the town to get the project approved.
Thanks, Hank. Thank you all. I think it's helpful from where you sit to understand a little bit about the project before making a decision like this. You know, just kind of a, going back to what you were talking about procedurally, as Mr. LaFawn mentioned, this is a project that we begun work on probably close to two years ago at this point and met preliminarily, had multiple pre-filing meetings with town staff. Jim and Jen, I don't mean to call you out, but just so you remember, you sat on the Planning Board when we went through the review of this project, just so you're clear that this is the same project that we had talked about. And, you know, I just wanted to confirm for the board's comfort, you know, this project was thoroughly reviewed, not only by the Carver Conservation Commission and Planning Board, but also the town's peer review engineer. We went back and forth with Fosson O'Neill on multiple aspects of the project to really fine-tune it. The project is fully compliant with the town's bylaws, Wetlands Protection Bylaw as well as the zoning bylaw. The applicant made a number of amendments to the projects and enhancements to the project and working with the folks that live in the Bow Street neighborhood and the Bunny's Road neighborhood, really the only area with any residential abutters anywhere near it, to provide specific screening for each of those that we spoke with. I mean, there was no stone left unturned is what I'm trying to convey. So it was a lengthy review process for a project that we really feel is a win-win for the landowner, the solar developer and the community. A win-win-win, I guess, it really, what it boils down to. As such, the votes from the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board were delivered unanimously in favor of this project and I think that that speaks well to how detailed the project review was developed. Hank and I spent a lot of time at these tables with the boards and we really feel very proud of the final result of this project. And to Hank's point, you know, as a professional in this industry for over 20 years and a Carver resident for over 20 years, I think that this is an important thing for all of us to recognize that is, it's important for this town to consider projects like this and the benefits of them and the preservation of agricultural land. These dual-use projects will continue to evolve and to come up and come before all of us and there are a lot of benefits to them. So I hope that we can all continue to discuss that and learn about them. You know, there are tax benefits that we've all heard about that are being discussed at the municipal level as well. We don't need to get into the details of that, but, you know, I think another important aspect in terms of development in our community is that a project like this requires nothing in terms of services, unlike other kinds of development that we've seen through the years. Again, it's a win-win. So I really just wanted to kind of touch on that for the board. I know you don't have the benefit necessarily of getting the full detailed view of the discussion of the project from where you sit unless you're watching the Planning Board and Conservation videos, which I'm sure some of you do. So that was really all I wanted to present to the, to the board and, you know, in terms of procedurally, I think applicants are certainly willing to adopt whatever process that the town feels is appropriate for these kinds of projects. I personally work a lot with the planning staff and the conservation staff to really try to hash out a lot of preliminary thoughts and discussions ahead of time before we even get to the final design and permitting phase. So I think in Carver, the Technical Review Committee meetings are awesome. It's a great idea. Not every community does it and I think they are extremely valuable. So, you know, going forward, I think that's a great way to stay on task and make sure that everybody understands what's happening and what the project entails. So I'll close with that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sterns.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Hank, I'm sorry, that's probably not your last name.
No, it works for me.
Okay.
I would just, I wanted to present a visual of the canopy component of the project because it's relatively unique. I think we're one of, only a small handful of developers that are doing projects like this. But as you can see, the nature of the project is long and linear inherently because that's what the canals look like. So these elevated canopies above the canals allow the canal to retain its function and they don't require the neutering of any other land uses like a typical solar project would. So with that, based on what we've presented, I would respectfully request the board to decline its right of first refusal on the land so that we can proceed with building it. We're excited to build it, the landowner's excited to build it and we're certainly happy to answer any additional questions about the project.
Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, I just have a couple. How many megawatts of this, is this project, is it, are kilowatts?
It's roughly four megawatts DC.
Okay. And my fear with a project like this of putting it in is that what's going to happen to the future of the cranberry bogs that are there is, does this open it up to then amass a mega solar field to be put out back there too? I want to protect the cranberry bogs, I really do. I think farming industry in Carver is a great process that we have in our town and people come to Carver to look at the cranberry bogs and to watch them be harvested. So there's a tourism market. So, there's a tourism market we do have here in Carver. So, that's my fear is that starting this out and then blanking it over, say, we're going to take this out of 61A, and all of a sudden, everything else gets taken out of 61A, and it's kind of the bait and switch. I mean, in my opinion, that's what happened with one other project is, we were told, we're going to farm underneath it, we're going to do all these things, yep, we're going to sell the berries, and then all of a sudden, berries aren't sold, and it's not farmed anymore, and it's just a dilapidated area. So, that's my fear. But, what are the heights of the solar panels that you're going to be put? Because we have an issue with another one property, so I just want to make sure we're clear on this.
So, on the canopies, the low end of the, it's a shed roof-type design. So, the low end, I believe, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's about nine feet above grade, and the high end is about 14 feet above grade.
Okay.
To allow for the continued maintenance of the canal.
Right.
Okay.
And the other ones in the back?
Oh, and the elevated array is set to the state's design requirement, which is, it's a proposed single-axis tracker array, so it's not fixed. It rotates throughout the portion of the day. And when the panels are at horizontal, they're 10 feet above grade.
Okay. All right, thank you. And just as a disclosure, I am an abut to the Gate Street property, just to let people know here.
So, if I may, to Mr. Belbin's point, I think that solar is one of the few projects that can allow agriculture, farming, and farmers to actually survive, especially right now. And I think that we were under the impression last time that this was covering a brook, but it's not. It's covering a canal. I just think that, in my opinion, it's the best use of 14 acres. Maybe it'll save the other 500 and change.
And thank you, Madam Chair, for pointing that out. And just to be clear, we specifically proposed these projects to make use of land that wasn't active cranberry bog. The landowner had no interest in us putting solar on top of cranberry bogs.
Thank you.
So, there's no active cranberry farming that occurs in the footprint of these proposed projects.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Anybody else? Mr. Townsend?
I'd just like to make a motion that we decline our right of first refusal on this property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion?
Do we know an estimated purchase price? I know we had asked last time to get one and maybe see the site too. I know we didn't see it, but do we know a fair asking price?
We don't have an appraisal for the property, but I don't, I think the opponent can speak to that, whether or not, I mean, granted, there's a, you know, an interest in what you say right now, but I, we don't have, we would have to go through an appraisal process, multiple appraisals, to really get a fair value. So, the answer, the long answer, the short answer is, no, we do not. But, I know.
Madam Chair, we haven't appraised the property, obviously. We are owners of land, we, as developers, are owners of land under a solar project, and we've had that land appraised for other purposes. And so, using a similar methodology that the appraisal followed for that land where there was solar on undeveloped land, we would estimate that this, the appraised value of this 14 acre was on the order of $1.3 million at a minimum, based on the lease value.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Madam Chair?
Just to tell.
So, I can reconfirm for the purposes of folks at home, this land is 100% landlocked, correct?
That's correct.
And there's no public access?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hartman?
Just want to make a quick comment. I was on the planning board when this was presented, and we did the site visit, and the canopy over the canal was very impressive. You know, it's one of the first times, and we were hoping that more of that can be done in the future because it was so unique. And just to reiterate the point, it is landlocked. I know we all want to try to buy land if we can, but we also have to be very careful about if it's really worth it. And again, landlocked, no access, in my opinion, I think this is, this is a good time to refuse this. Good example.
Further discussion? Mr. Ward, did you like to put in your two cents?
Thank you. Good morning. Dick Ward, 20 West Street. The cranberry industry is struggling. In, I am a cran-solar farmer. I have five acres. At the time that we proposed it, the selectmen did not vote to purchase it. If they had, I would not have been able to stay on that 50-acre farm because the cranberries would not be contributing enough to my retirement income so that I could stay there. My, one of my concerns here is, is that as you listen to the discussion and the papers and so on about the selectmen purchasing the 61A properties, it's, it becomes a concern of the cranberry growers within our own town, do we want to propose any solar anymore? If I didn't have that five acres of solar, I would not be able to stay in the cranberry industry. It's that simple. And the amount of money that the solar is paying on my five acres, okay, is around $25,000 a year directly to the town on the five acres. And that's income the towns, don't forget. Now, this is something that we have all concerned ourselves with. This is renewable energy. So, renewable energy, solar panels, cranberry bogs, some of them, if we're not going to be able to do some subsidizing our income, if we're not going to have solar, we are, that bog is going to go abandoned because our old house and our old early blacks are not in a production level that we can make any money. You're going to have to renovate your bogs, and that's $50,000 an acre, which some old geezer like me ain't going to do. So, what was, what I'm saying is, please be, I'm not opposed necessarily completely of the selectmen purchasing a piece of property if, as a citizen, you have a good use in mind that would fit the citizens and the, I bet if we went before a town meeting, the town meeting would not be in favor of purchasing every 61A piece of property that was coming up. We wouldn't be able to afford it. As this gentleman said, I was thinking of the value of mine. The value of my property would have to take in consideration what I get for rent. So, that five acres over a 20-year period would be close to a half a million dollars in value. And I don't know where that would go, but I'm just looking at it saying, my goodness, as a citizen, are we going to take my five acres, landlocked, in the middle of my 50 acres, we're going to buy it for a half a million dollars to put into conservation? I don't see as that would be working. I need to continue and have, continue being a cran-solar farmer. So, I hope you keep that in mind as you go through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Mr. Uronimo, did you want to add anything?
Thank you. I think Dick hit on every note that we were doing. As far as a tax-based revenue, I think the town benefits from the solar project in dual usage. So, in saying that, pretty much Dick covered everything, and I think it's a great project to begin with. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Belbin?
Yeah. I grew up in Pembroke, and we had plenty of cranberry bogs in Pembroke. We had a lot of them. Unfortunately, now, they've been abandoned, and the town owns them, and they're just big tree areas, and I don't want Carver to become that type of a community. And I understand the cranberry growers needing to protect their farming. Totally understand, okay? But, there's also a process that I think we need to follow, and that's part of this issue that we have. But, you're right, we have to address properties that are invaluable to the town when we do the 61As that come before us. You're right. But, we have to know this before they come in here of what's going on. So, I want to keep the cranberry growers going. I don't want it to look like Pembroke. I don't. It does not look good when I drive by Maticuset Street, all right? Or, what is that other one? 50, no, 27. All right, I just don't want it to look like that around Carver. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of not exercising our right of first refusal on this property, we say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it's unanimous.
No, I'm abstaining because I feel without the purchase price, I cannot make a fully informed decision.
Okay, so, it's 401.
Can I just raise one quick point to this? And we've discussed it before, and that is the inconsistency with state law with regard to removing 61A land in a dual-use project in that we are looking, hopefully through our Mr. Wick, Brian Wick, in the Department of Agriculture, there will be some legislation by the end of this year. We don't know if that's going to happen. And I think I, a previous meeting mentioned that Mr. Townsend and Mr. Germaine did discuss with me about perhaps seeking a special act if that doesn't happen, so. But, failing all that, at least we would go into a pilot agreement with the proponent at some point, being cognizant of this inconsistency, so we could at least address it at that time so that there's no surprises later on, so.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Wick, you just mentioned, is the executive director of the Cape Cod Cranberry Growers Association. That's good. If he's on it, hopefully, they'll get it done. Okay. Moving on now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Our next item is the Land Conservation Ad Hoc Committee request. We had our first meeting, must have been a couple of weeks ago now, and I think, well, we have two members here from the ad hoc Conservation Land Ad Hoc Committee. Basically, what we have right now are six, it's got eight positions, sorry, nine positions. Six of them are filled, so our quorum is five. The people there are, we have a forester, we have a person who actually started and maintains what's called the Bentley Trail in Miles Standis State Forest, that's Bob Bentley. We have Dan Badger, who owns a wilderness something company. Anyway, he's a very outdoors sort of person, Savory Moore, and Jim Nowan, who's also on the Conservation Commission. We have Joe Mix, who's on the Agricultural Commission. He wasn't unable to meet that meeting. What they really want to do is start work now because they're all capable physically, and they've got all the tools. They want to get out there and sort of make it so that our original goal, which was to bring in people from in-town and get some buy-in onto maintaining these trails, the committee concluded, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong here, that in order to get buy-in from members of the community, we have to make it so they can actually get on the trails first. I mean, some of them are practically impossible, impassable, excuse me, and these guys are willing to get out there and do it. And so, they're really asking for you to change their mission statement slightly so that they are allowed to also get out there and do some work on this. We just feel like we can't wait. We want to get some of this stuff opened up for the spring. So, that's Dan or Mr. Badger or Mr. Moore? Would you care to elaborate?
All right, let me go back.
Sorry, I forgot the name of your company, Dan.
Uh, Dan Badger, 165 Plymouth Street. Yeah, it's Badger Wilderness Guides.
Great.
Yeah, currently, there are, there are projects already going on on a volunteer level, whether it be through scouting or through, I train people to be guides and outdoor educators, and part of that is a requirement of my apprenticeship program is a time in the field in terms of, and usually that translates into trail maintenance, some type of education and leave no trace ethics and so forth. So, currently, there are already two cleanup projects going on in the area, one of which is a series of stewardship days that are set in Miles Standis State Forest, but also we have a Eagle project that's being, that's being overseen by Concom up on the Orange Trail of the coal property. And so, we have, we have the volunteer apparatus already, already in the beginning stages, people that are already interested in getting involved. And in our meeting, we talked about multiple tiers of what type of helpers we're looking for. We have sort of an advisory tier, as it were. We have the helpful helpers, I think we had said, and then we have people that want to help but will need guidance. And that last tier really is one that we can't really allow to help right now until we have a safe, a safe setting for them to be able to get out there. And a lot of that will be more in the, in the area of trash cleanup and, you know, trimming, trimming branches and things like that, but nothing, nothing, nothing too technical, so.
Good, thank you. Any, anyone like to make a motion so we can have a discussion here?
I'll make a motion, we approve the, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's right.
The ad hoc committee for land conservation to start work, physical work on those areas of the town ownership.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Any further discussion? Mr. Belbin?
So, with this, the properties that we're talking about would be the coal property, Savory Ave, Indian Street, the Wenham property that's owned, these are owned by the Conservation Commission.
Yes, they have a list. It's, there's one off of Wenham Road, there's one off Woodhaven, there's one on, off of Wareham Street. There's a whole list of them, and we took them out of the Open Space and Recreation Plan, so it's quite a few. But, the only ones that actually currently have trails, you're right, are the coal property, Savory Avenue, and the Indian Brook Conservation Land.
Correct. And the other ones really haven't had anything done to them.
Right, right.
So, I mean, I've, I've walked the one on Wenham, and it's very impassable, no matter what. I mean, the only people that are work doing anything down there are the hunters, this active hunting stands out there. So, I think that's with this committee, I think we need that little aspect of hunters, some type of outdoors activity. I know others are, but to actually have a hunter out there also because right now, it's getting to hunting season, and we need to protect people that are out there if they're going to work.
Okay.
But, thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Bogart?
I think this is awesome. I remember when you brought the committee to us, I was so excited, and I know I said something to the effect of, you know, well, if you guys get ideas, are you going to be able to do it? And you said yes, and stuff can happen fast. Look at that. So, I am so excited about this and by everyone involved. And you had said the committee is not totally full. There we go. Could we put it on the website? Like, this is exciting. We love conservation and outdoorsiness in this town. Let's let people know what it is, what they can get involved with, even if you don't want to be a member, the different tiers that Mr. Badger had been describing, maybe people would want to get involved that way. So, the fact that this is starting, to me, is amazing. And what can we do as a board to let people know how to get involved, even if we announce it here with descriptions of what those, what those participations are? Like, if there's anything that we can do as a committee, I know I would like to help promote this because this is awesome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bogart.
I have one last thing.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Belbin, and then?
Um, is, can we also set up a funding source for, if they need funds or whatnot to do anything on these, that there be a funding source and a means to get some funding to do some of the work that we may have to, instead of just volunteers or whatnot, there may be fuel or specialized equipment that may be needed for that? Is there a fund set up that we could utilize for that?
I'll have to check, Bob, but I don't believe that's the case. That would probably have to be something at a town meeting. I don't know that we have something appropriate for that at the moment.
Okay.
What about that project fund for small projects? Um, what about the, that project fund for small projects? Possible?
I could take a look at that and speak to Maggie.
I mean, I guess it would depend on what, what kind of project the committee's looking at.
Right, size and scope, exactly.
Right. Okay. Um, Mr. Badger, did you have something to add to this discussion?
Sorry about that. One, one thing that, that Mr. Belbin brought up, um, that I think relates directly to both recruitment of volunteers, uh, community buy-in, but also the actual execution of, of different projects. Um, that is the, the safety standpoint of it. So um, part of that, part of that is when we do have uh, different tiers of groups, uh, for example, to know that they need to, this time of the year, they need to be wearing blaze orange uh, attire uh, and/or restrict uh, their activities to Sundays, where hunting is not, uh, not happening. We, that's what we're doing with the Boy Scouts right now. We are actively putting together a, a bridge project, but our, our workdays are only on, on Sundays right now. So um, but just for people who may be apprehensive about, you know, is this, is this something that I can participate in? Um, I think we're as a, as a committee going to better define what those tiers are, so people can maybe figure out where they land, where their wheelhouse begins and ends. And to make the information more accessible, but also understand that there's also an educational standpoint. So if this is something that they're interested in, but it's not, they don't have a background in it, that's fine, too. Uh, there's a place for them as well. Lastly, to the fiscal side of things, I believe we have, um, we have to discuss um, uh, grants that are available to, to help support projects like this. Um, but also, um, so that it's better defined. Um, I know a couple of us are actually scouting out different areas of these properties to make a priority list, so that we can really talk about um, what areas are important and get an idea of what, you know, a given boardwalk would cost for materials. We, we know we can get a lot of in-kind uh, technical support from, from local contractors and so forth, but, but to understand what all that's going to cost, we'll be, we'll be better defining that. Right now, uh, we're, we're targeting areas that we can, that we can handle without technical equipment, uh, where we can um, make the projects noticeable. For example, I think we're going to be looking at Savory, uh, Savory, uh, right, uh, to start and getting that, getting that cleared out. And a lot of that can be done actually with hand tools.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and volunteers, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
Yes, I just, Savory Moore, 12 South Main Street. Um, just to tag on to what um, Dan said. Uh, one of the things that we did discuss at our first meeting was the possibility of having sponsorships, sort of like highways where they adopt a mile and getting local businesses to come in for some financial help uh, and then just get a little placard that says that they helped on this particular part of a trail. So that's something we're, we're looking into. We haven't 100% decided on it, but it seemed like a, a pretty good, uh, possible source of funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, so I think there's been a motion. Has there been a motion in a second? It's been a while. Yes, thank you. Do you want to amend that to include um, and possible funding? If we, if we don't, if the town doesn't have it, we can't do it, but, but we, at least we can look into that?
Well, we can look into it. I don't know that it needs to be part of the motion.
Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you all. Um, and thank you too for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving along to the summarizing and discussing the process of the informal evaluation of the interim town administrator. Um, Jen had asked Elaine and, and me exactly what we were doing. I think, I think the last meeting, we talked about this informal evaluation. We got up to, um, that we were going to look at all the, the formal evaluation categories we used in the past and that we're going to take any category, subcategory that we wanted to ask Rick a question about. And then we form our questions. And then we do this for as many of those categories or subcategories as we want to. We hand them into Elaine. She collates them, collates them and specifies, you know, who the questions were from. And I think Elaine pointed out that we didn't really move beyond that. That we didn't explain what comes next. Is that your understanding? So um, and then I, I think I gave Jen an example. So after we send our written questions to Elaine, um, for Rick to answer, Rick then answers the question, sends his answers to Elaine, who then sends us all the answers to our questions. Okay? This is just my understanding. I, so I'm here to clarify and, and you guys tell me if this is your understanding of it. I know you've been through this once before, Mark, and I think you have been through it too. Right? Except it was more formal, the process we did then. So then we gather all the questions and answers together. We each go talk to Rick individually. Um, I think we did decide that talking to him about it, we may change our, you know, we, we may think he's going to say X, but he says Y, and we like that a lot better than we thought it was going to be, whatever, or worse. Um, and then we come back to the meeting and we discuss it in public. Is that sort of what everyone remembers as the process? Anything anyone wants to change from that? And then again, when we bring it to the meeting, supposing you said something that changes my mind about where I'm, my, you know, position on his evaluation. We're allowed to change our minds at the meeting as well. I think that was the understanding. Does that suit everybody? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, Mrs. Bogart.
When we meet with Rick, are we able to ask questions we may have thought of that weren't in the formal question response?
Yeah, I, I think so. I mean, I'm okay with that. What, what does the rest of the board feel? Mr. Townsend.
I, I think sometimes, yes, when you ask questions or perhaps when another select board member asks a question, that may lead you to a subsequent question. So I think it's important that we have a little flexibility there to.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
And then should we set a date for our deadline to questions for Elaine? I appreciate you bringing this up because again, as a newbie, I just want to make sure I do it right and, you know. So do we, do we need to get our questions to Elaine by a certain time, certain day?
I think the six month, we're right around the six month period now. So what, what is the pleasure of the board? Like, two weeks or? Is that too, too quick?
I, I think two weeks is, is pretty good.
Two weeks, two weeks. Okay. So I don't, I don't have my calendar right in front of me. Two weeks from today is?
Twenty-two plus fourteen, oh, that's thirty-fifth.
First week of November.
Third November, I don't know.
Oh, so November 5th? Yeah, it's November 5th.
So maybe six, November 6th, that's Friday.
Friday, okay. Yeah, November 6th, okay. That sounds good. Okay, guys. Thank you very much.
So, so then, because again, I just want to know everything. So we'll send Elaine our questions. Elaine will compile them and send them to Rick to answer. And then they come back to us. Is there a timeframe that that kind of response happens, or do we just kind of wing it?
That's up to the board?
I, I personally think there should be timeframes for everything. I think there should be a timeframe, but get the questions back, a timeframe for us to sit, sit down with, with the town administrator and then, you know, at least a goal. You know, it may move depending on what we have, how busy some of our meetings are, but at least a goal for a meeting where we, we discuss it.
Okay. So November 6th, questions to Elaine.
Might I suggest that we all try to sit down by Rick by November 20th? That's two weeks after the 6th.
Okay. Does that sound good to everyone? Eleven twenty, twenty twenty?
So Rick's answers would have to be back to us before the 20th.
That, that's what I was going to try to clarify.
Are you okay with that? Mr. Lavon?
For the 27th, we could push it off another week if we want to, if you think you need more time, whatever.
Guess it depends on the questions.
No, good point.
Oh, yeah, wait, so if we get our questions in, wait, to Elaine on November 6th, does that give her enough time to compile them, give them to him, get them back to us and then meet with him? That's pretty silly.
Especially where you have Thanksgiving in, in there, too. Maybe we should push it back into maybe the, the 4th, which is the first Friday in December.
So that's, we have to have sat down and spoken with Rick by?
By the 4th.
December 4th? Okay.
Rick, you need more than 24 hours to answer all the questions?
Depends on the question.
Okay. So that means then that we would have had our conversations with Rick by December 4th. And at some point after that, um, we will have it.
Yeah, depending on how busy our meetings are.
Select board meeting, okay.
What we could do. I, I just think it's important that we move this process along as quickly as we can. Quite frankly, it's in everybody's best interest, I think, for the Rick to know what we expect and for the board to know, or the public to know how, what kind of a, how we think Rick's doing. So I think it's in everybody's, uh, best interest to move it along.
I appreciate that. Mm-hmm. I think so, too. Okay. I don't know that that needs a vote. I think we're all in a consensus here.
I'm just hoping Nancy gets all this.
Yeah.
I have such a headache.
Sorry, Nancy. You'll be able to watch the film, right? We are being recorded, hopefully. Okay. Um, so the next item is the vote to confirm Kelly DeCarly as zoning board of appeals alternate. Mr. Lavon?
Yes, just for the sake of knowing the process. Currently, well, the, the bylaw regarding the appointing authority of the town administrator states that, that any appointments by the town administrator can be um, vetoed by the board or within 15 days unless otherwise affirmed. In this particular case, these, the ZBA, um, actually, they believe they may need somebody as early as next week because of some, uh, I mean, people, they think they may have an attendance issue for some permitting. This has been advertised. It has been on the website, this alternate member. Only one applicant, this applicant I knew was coming to me because the chairman of the ZBA discussed it with me and said that she may be interested. I did meet with her, did speak to her. She seemed to have, you know, the correct mentality. You know, um, the one reservation I did have is because she also does, you know, is clerk for that board and others. So my, my concern is that if that becomes, it's hard to participate in a meeting, as you know, while trying to record a meeting. But to the extent that most of these meetings, she would not be participating in only as an alternate, so. So I did suggest that if that becomes a problem, we may have to deal with it at a later date. But again, it has been advertised properly. So at this stage, because there, there, there isn't 15 days for the board to be notified and, and, and decide if they wish to put something on an agenda for a possible veto, um, I would ask that it be affirmed, so that the ZBA will have their membership intact for the next meeting.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to affirm Kelly DeCarly as the zoning board of appeals alternate.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
For discussion here.
Um, yes, discussion. Mr. Belbin.
So my questions are basically twofold with this. Is, the first one is being the um, secretary or records keeper of the ZBA. The records have to be detailed and accurate. And because they have to be detailed and accurate, meaning that you have to be focused on what people are saying, how they're saying it, and that you're putting it out there. It has, doesn't have to be a transcript, but it has to be detailed and accurate to the issues that are at hand. So that's my first one. So if she's going to be part of a decision, uh, as from an alternate to an actual member to actually vote, then they need to have somebody else in place to take those meeting minutes. No questions, if he ends up, you need to be focused on what's ahead of you, not what's down here. All right, that's my opinion. That's the first one. The second one is, it would be like, nice for her to come in and, and to turn around and talk to us, but I guess in that loop is that um, what did you see for qualities for her to take on this role? For the ZBA?
Well, number one, she, she applied, so she obviously has an interest. Her thought process is that she likes this particular role more than she liked her planning board role. She likes what the ZBA does. She likes that it's a little more black and white. Uh, that fits her personality a little bit better. Uh, so, so again, she likes the permitting process. She likes this, what this particular board does. Um, she's been involved before with the town and some other capacities, although a little more limited than some of you. So though, that's, that's what I liked about her. She's articulate, interested, and she's also comes recommended by the members of the ZBA.
And, and didn't she also serve as the alternate before? I mean, the clerk, sorry?
Oh, yeah, she actually is for, for a few boards.
For a while, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
No, but I know Jim brought up a point as to whether or not he believed it was properly, um, there was enough publicity or advertisement, but is, it was done in a, in a fashion that would, that, that we, that we're accustomed to and required to do, so.
I just, you know, I think you know my, um, my feeling on the zoning board and whatnot. Um, I don't think it's black and white. I think there's some gray areas in there with that. If it was black and white, then we wouldn't have some issues that go on in that board. So um, I have no problem with her serving on this board. Thank you very much.
No, I, I actually was going to say something about that. I think the zone, excuse me, the zoning board of appeals is, grants variances. And the way the bylaw is written, um, the variance can only be granted um, if there's absolutely no other alternative. So I, I think it's pretty black and white myself, but that's a discussion for another time. Just my personal two cents. Mr. Hoffman?
I, I guess my question, uh, and the only reason I brought it up, Rick, was with the advertisement. I, I hadn't seen it and I got a few phone calls about, people didn't know that was available. So I, I know, you know, we want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to see openings. And that was the first time I had seen it, was when it was on the agenda that she was going to get.
Okay.
Now, I realize we're in a time-sensitive area, so that they really need somebody, it sounds like, to have their next meeting. But I don't think that should force us, I won't say force us, but speed up this process. I'd like to see it open and it's nothing against Kelly, but I just think more, you know, I'm sure other people would want to get in, involved, maybe be an alternate on that.
Well, that's fair, but I will say it has been on the website as an opening. I mean, that is where we, we advertise those, you know, historically, and they, they remain up there until they're filled. Uh, so, in, in terms of knowledge, um, I would think people who are interested in such positions, they would, you know, or other positions, you know, boards and committees, that is where they would go to, to, to see. But, but once again, certainly defer to your thoughts on the matter.
And I guess my other question, I think you partly answered it, was I know that Kelly was an alternate on the planning board when we were on and then resigned a short time after being appointed. So just wanted to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Right.
And again, I'm sure she, you know.
No, I agree, and that was part of, part of my questioning for her, uh, too. Because you're right, it, we don't need people, you want continuity as much as you can on special permitting authorities, as much as possible.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Oh, Mr. Townsend, yes, please.
Just a, a couple of points. First of all, I agree with Mr. Belbin that I, I think it's going to be difficult for her to keep the records and participate actively in the board. So I think if, if indeed she's going to be a member of the board, we need to find somebody else to act in that other capacity. I don't, I don't see how you could possibly do both.
I think when she's uh, involved in a hearing as an alternate, that may, may be often. It may not be that often. But I, again, that's, that was one of, one of my concerns, too. So we can certainly make, make that a point.
And to Mr., Mr. Hoffman's point about how the, the opening was, was advertised, I know we've discussed in here as a, as a board, finding other ways of making the public aware. I, I just don't think that people regularly, oh, let me, let me go see what's on the website today. You know, I think, I think we can reach out to, to the newspaper, I think social media. I think, and we've discussed this before. I think we have to find other ways actively to, to let people know what positions are available. I just don't think, like I said, people get up in the morning and decide, I'm going to have to check the website today and see what's, what's going on there, so I.
I mean, I don't.
So.
Mrs. Bogart?
I echo Mark's concern about her clerking at the same time. First of all, we did work with Kelly very briefly on planning board and I was on the recreation committee for her. So from a professional standpoint, she is a great member. She came into the first planning board site visit. She was the first person to ask a question. And she was so well-spoken. So I think she would be a valuable member to that board, um, from that regard. But I am concerned about her clerking at. I am concerned about her clerking at all, because if, you know, Rick had said, well, if she's going to be involved in a public hearing, she can't. But public hearings can span meetings. So maybe the first meeting, she would be the clerk because everyone's there, but in a subsequent meeting, someone misses and she'd have to step in for it. You, then you weren't focused on every meeting. Like, like there, we would just have to be clear that she.
Once you begin a hearing process, you, you finish it. You, you don't step in after the fact, I don't believe.
Well, because there's the Mullins Rule that we've had to use on planning board. You miss a meeting, you fill out the paper, you're fine. Like.
Well, I think Mr. Levon has said that they will make an effort to find another clerk if she does have to actually.
Well, can we just make sure that it's not just an effort? Because I, I agree with Mark. Like, you've got to be fully in there for every hearing.
Right. I do, I do think it's fair, though, also to rely on the input from the members of the ZBA. They may or may not feel like they're being served. But again, to your points, that's exactly one of the concerns that I had, too, was because it is, it is tired, tough to do this. I mean, if any one of you were trying to, you know, record this meeting, you can't really, you can't do it effectively. So I agree with your points completely, to the extent that I actually brought it up with her myself, and if it does become an issue that we're, we're going to have to address it one way or the other.
And there's no financial conflict with being a town employee and on the board?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman, you look like you want some say something.
Just one other quick question was, did you ask her if she had to give up the clerking? Would she still want to be an alternate?
I did not specifically ask that question.
Because I know you, she gets paid for that, and I don't want to have, all of a sudden we find out that she can't clerk anymore, and then that changed her mind to be an alternate.
And that could, that could happen. That could happen.
I think that's a good question, and I, I perhaps think we should get the answer to that question before we proceed with a vote personally.
I just don't want to hinder her. I mean, all of a sudden, she can't get that income. I know it's not a lot.
Right. Well, again, I think to some extent that will depend upon what, you know, what the ZBA's feelings are, whether or not their board is being well-served. And the other thing, too, is we don't meet again till November 5th, Mark, and the ZBA meets, meets next week. So that, that's, that's one of the reasons for me bringing it to you now. So.
I, I appreciate that, and I, I appreciate the urgency and the need, but I, I just think, you know, we're talking appointment for more than one meeting here. I just think we ought to make, just, just make sure these things.
I will not be insulted, whatever the board decides, Mark. Do not worry. So.
Mr. Belbin?
So being through the zoning board process, all right, having, if there's an issue with the quorum, if they only have four members for a project, all four members have to agree or it doesn't pass. So there's an issue with that, that if one member, if whatever it is, they're going up, I'm looking at what their agenda is now. I mean, that's coming up. I don't know what the timeframe on some of those projects are, but I want to make sure that whatever projects are coming up, that they have the representation by the town of a full board instead of a partial board. So I, I really, I, I understand your point, Mark, I really do, but if there is an issue with a quorum of three members where they don't have enough to actually hold a meeting, then they have a quorum, but they don't have the votes to go along with it, then we have issues with the process of our residents going before the zoning board. So they need to have four members at a minimum, in my opinion. And if we're going to have our issue with this, then we really need to look out for the residents. So, I mean, I, I would support this, this appointment.
I wonder if there's a way, and I don't know if this is possible, you'd have to guide me on this, but I wonder if there's a way of making the appointment conditional upon her, you know, not, not being the clerk. I, I wonder if that's even a possibility. I don't know.
I think, I don't know if it's a, I don't know that it's a, I don't know that that's a legal issue. I think it's a matter of, once, once again, I'm a little uncomfortable not, I mean, her performance in that role, I think would have to be, you know, think the feedback to me would have to come from the, the board, the board itself.
Okay.
You know, I don't want to presume to, to know if they feel they're being served. So again, I don't, I don't have a great answer to that, Mark.
Well, perhaps since there's such an urgency.
Yeah.
Perhaps you could just, again, I know you've done it already, but you can just express the board's concerns.
And again, to the extent that was also my concern. I, I agree with that. So again, I, I appreciate all your thoughts. Again, I'm trying to help the board, and again, very fair questions that I was also concerned with myself. So.
And, and I, I concur with Mr. Levon. I think we should let the zoning board of appeals, you know, tell us.
But I will pass along that concern very.
When it's not working.
You know, in writing, so they're aware of my, of our concern collectively.
I just, this is it. This is it, I promise. Okay? But I have to say, the meeting minutes that she has put out there are very good. So the quality of her, her work is not in question at all. I just want to make sure. She's done a very good job.
Should it suffer, though? That, that's my.
Correct.
And I appreciate your point there, boy. That's.
Correct. But thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion and a second. To affirm Kelly DeCarly as the zoning board of appeals alternate. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It's 4-1-0. To affirm her appointment. Thank you. Okay, minutes licenses, topics not recently anticipated. The only thing we have here is our next meeting is November 5th, and that is a Thursday morning like this. And I believe everyone has said that they're okay with that particular.
Is that at the same time, 8:30?
Yeah, it would be 8:30. Does that work for everybody?
Are we going to go back to our Tuesday evenings?
We will. Yes. I'm, I'm doing, there's a lot of stuff. You guys have given me lots of stuff to work with, so I'm trying to accommodate it all. And so sometimes it's easier. I know, I know because Bob works at night. He has to plan weeks and weeks ahead to, if he's going to have another night. So, yeah, at some point we will. That, that's my goal.
Are Tuesday evenings still good for Bob?
I can work around my schedule for work. I get, I work one every third weekend I work. So what I end up doing is I end up taking a Tuesday before and a Tuesday after. So I actually have a long stretch of work time to cover for those two weeks. So, and if they're on an opposite week, then my improved coworkers are really good about switching off, working a weekend instead of a Tuesday. They'd like to have a Saturday or Sunday off where I end up working. So.
Yeah.
And the only reason I ask is a lot of people, not a lot, I've had a few texts and conversations with people that want to attend some of the meetings and they just can't during the Thursday, you know.
No, I understand. I, I understand. Yeah.
We have some, we're going to have some pretty good issues coming up that I'd like to have the public hear for.
Definitely. Yes. And, yeah, the reason we didn't have it this past Tuesday is because of town meeting, and it was its schedule, and then we, we just didn't get a chance to figure out what we were even going to have on the agenda for Tuesday in time to post it. So that was the reason for this one. Anyway, okay. Select board community announcements? Does anyone have anything? Okay, select board notes. Mrs. Bogart?
All right. Well, one, we've talked about a few times today. Increased communication between town hall and the public via social media or other methods. I would like this dealt with, with committee openings, but also just in general. I, I want town hall, I want the public to know more of what's going on in town hall, what's coming up, what's being worked on. Just more general communication, because there's not, people aren't going to the website, but even if they are, let's make a section where they can kind of find out what's going on. I think social media can be used more often, and I think we can be more creative with ways to do it, too. So just overall, increased communication from here to there. And then on the flip side, that would give them more opportunities or maybe more encouragement to communicate with us and make comments, too. So I'd love to explore that in the future. And then my second was a better understanding of town department functions and responsibilities. I know it would, would benefit me and some people from the public, too, just to know what exactly does every office do and every position do. I would love maybe a brief presentation in one of our future meetings. So there's clarity, and it's out there.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. I just had the one item. I know this is very vague, but I think that when it comes to our relationship with other elected officials in town, that I think we have to understand what their roles are and to respect those. They are just as elected as we are, and that's really all I have. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.